So, welcome everyone to our meeting here. We're starting a little bit early so we can go out and do a field trip out to the school forests. But we're going to start it off here and stand with, start with this pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Terry, if you'd start us off with administrator's report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco via email. And the media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Any amendments for today's agenda?
Yes, actually, I'm going to ask you to remove six A and B executive session as I do not have any executive business to share with you this evening.
Okay, all right. So we do have amendment to our agenda tonight. And I will seek a motion to approve with that change.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of six A and B executive session.
Second.
Any other further questions? Hearing none, call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. And I should state that we do not have Terry with us today. Board member Terry is absent, so it'll just be the four of us, so. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes of the August 17th, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. Moving on to two B, approving vouchers slash check register for the period of August 12th, 2022 through September 14th, 2022. So we're prepared to make a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated August 12th, 2022 through September 14th, 2022 for accounts payable checks number 222300004 through 222300012. Regular checks number 126839 through 127016 and manual checks number 5351 through 5368 in the amount of $610,248.70. And ACH payroll checks number 900038331 through 900038475. And manual payroll checks number 1678 through 1706 in the amount of $230,227.97 for a total of $840,476.67.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Michelle. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. Next, we move to public comments. Would anyone wish to speak to any of the agenda items? All right, move on to administrator's report. Terry?
Yes, I'm going to give you a brief report on a couple of topics. The first one being the referendum, the November 2022 referendum. I just wanted you to be aware that the district website has been updated with a page through Jen's wonderful help devoted to the operational referendum, strictly factual, has our historical, easy to find, easy to read. And then we have our informational meeting scheduled for October 17th at the Three Lakes School Auditorium, October 26th at the Sugar Camp Library at Sugar Camp School, and November 1st at the Monaco Town Hall. We also have informational flyers, and Jen put out a copy for each. We think they turned out great, so I wanted you to have them, and they were very, very nice quality and not expensive, in fact, very inexpensive. So this is what will be posted around the towns and, you know, people, community, wherever we can get approval to put that up. Really like how it just catches the eye with our blue, our blue J and has times listed and when to vote. And again, reiterating that the property taxes will not see an increase by the mill rate. So I also, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at the website, really nicely done. I carry some of this hard copy with me because I do have people who ask. And we have a frequently asked section, question section, and I think that's getting a lot of traction because people, you know, when it first came out, we didn't have really any negative responses other than people wanting clarification of information, which is why we're here, we're the information providers. So I feel like what's been put together, what Jen has done with our work together is going well. And then we are going to be doing a mailing, which is going to be like a half postcard with the date for voting and a little bit more information about what it looks like for the people who live in the district. Did you have any questions on that?
The date says on here, October 25th, but on our administrative content, it says October 26th. Oh, okay, so this is right? Good, awesome.
That would be my error.
No, it's okay.
Thank you for catching that. Yes, so that is to come. Jen, did you have anything that I'm maybe missing?
We did a video with you.
Oh, yes, you're right. Well, then I also, I also did a video that kind of goes through the real meat of it. It's not very exciting. It's not a normal Terry talk, you know, it's more like this is what it is. So that's going to be posted on the website as well, in case someone doesn't want to read through it, you can skim through. So that's where we're at to this point. Caleb, I should give a shout out to him, he'll be here for the second part of the meeting. He has been fantastic with getting additional information for us, really helping educate myself, Jen, those with, we're trying to really get a deeper understanding of, you know, the whys of equalized value and things of that nature that is just a foreign language to us normally, so we're trying.
Did he do an interview this morning or tomorrow?
He, he does have a radio interview, they asked for one of us, and I suggested a new voice would be nice to hear, so he's going to be doing that on WXPR.
Nice.
Very good, yeah.
We did also reach out to our news stations and let them know, so that's where we're at.
All right, so we have three available informational meetings that anyone in the community definitely encourage to attend and ask their questions, so. Looking forward to that, and thank you for all the work you've put forward to this so far, so.
I think we're feeling really good about what we've been pulling together. The second thing I wanted to tell you is that third Friday count took place last Friday, but of course, that's not tabulated yet. We have to wait for other district schools to verify their numbers, but I wanted to give you a preliminary. Last year, our third Friday count was 503. This year, our third Friday count is standing at 520. So just, you know, always like seeing the positive, our open enroll in and out are almost at the same point. I think it's 77 in and 74 out, but we will have more specific numbers for you at the next meeting after they're certified. I went through and did a quick look of where students are going, because you've been curious about that before, and did get a pretty good feel on where things are at. Like I said, they're not completely verified. We did lose a few of our open enroll in from last year, but I wanted you to know right off the bat that seven of those students either moved out of the very close area or out of state, I mean, almost all of them are out of state. Nine of them returned to their home school or Rylander area, if not their home school, the private school there. I also want to remind the board, sometimes we can't take open enroll request students or we have to end a relationship because it's either not in the best interest of the student, there's an attendance issue or behavior issues that, you know, and that was the case that we had to address this time. So I don't ever like turning anybody away, but there's much more than just yea or nay. So I wanted you to be aware of that. Our biggest loss for schools, open enrolling out, is still Northland Pines, that we have more kids going out than coming in. And that one, I'm going to do a little more investigating on, but in Rylander, we have more kids coming in than going out. And we had 16 coming in from Crandon this year and zero going out. So that gives you a little flavor of where we are at. We did, by having our RVA affiliation, I think is wonderful because seven students that would have gone out to a virtual stayed with the district. And that's, in a nutshell, where we are there.
All right, very good.
And that would be it for my, that's my report for tonight.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you for that. And next, under new business, we have our site visit to Camp Three School Forest property. And we will be leaving the boardroom here and driving out, I guess individually, or I've got room in my truck if somebody wants to jump in. And we'll go out and we'll meet Justin and Phil from MSA, and we can ask our questions. We had a preliminary sketch of, of the proposal, what MSA is, is offering to the district, and so a good, good chance to see that, I guess, on what that looks like on the ground, I guess, or what, what it could look like on the ground. And so I would estimate we're going to be back here by 6:30?
I'm shooting for 6:15. That's what I told people to arrive, so we could be rolling by 6:30.
All right, very good. Okay. Very good. Okay, so for all those that are staring at a bunch of wet people in front here, we just came back from the school forest tour and, which was 5A on our meeting agenda. So we did our site visit out there, and we'll talk a little bit about it further on down the agenda. So we can go now to 5B, introduction of new staff.
Excellent.
So that should have been a requirement that they came out with.
Oh, well, you know what? I got to tell you, some of them actually sitting, sitting here did, when we had our in-service days. I'm looking at two of them right now, sure. So I'm just going to go ahead and give you the rundown, but if, if you're here, put you on the spot, feel free to say a word or two of hello, okay? So for Sugar Camp, we have Katie Rose, she's teaching 4K. Katie was also a student teacher with us two years ago, so she's over in Sugar Camp. Eric Struck is teaching third grade, don't see Eric. Grace Stefanic, many of you know her, she is a paraprofessional, really spending the majority of her time with our 4Kers, that, and then other things too, but. And then Trina Manella, she is our part-time speech and language person for at Sugar Camp. So Kelly Weddick is able to spend full time here. Three Lakes at the elementary, we have Kaylee Struck, she's doing a second 4K. We split the 4K because we've got big enough numbers, and she's also doing special ed EC within her group. Rhonda Beatty is a paraprofessional. She has joined us as well. She did a lot of subbing for us, and she's been with us, she's a familiar face, but she's full time. Rhonda's not here, is she? Somebody, if I miss somebody, just yell at me, okay? Jennifer Frank, she's also a new paraprofessional with us. Jill Norship, Jill's here. Jill, you get to take the stage. New food service director.
All right, Jill. Hello, everyone. Terry, I'll tell you, so it's exciting year, this year for the food service director. We're trying to implement some fresh foods into the lunch program, Whole Foods, and make everything fresh and new and from a garden standpoint as well, so I'm a little lazily here, a little congestion in my ear the last day. So I'm pretty excited about to try like some new fresh ingredients and make everything kind of from scratch, utilize the greenhouse, and I'm very excited to help Bard with me as well, helping me this year. So I was pretty excited that she's our new chief helper or mantra. So we both have a lot of restaurant experience, so trying to implement some new flavors, some new items to the kids, to try a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So it's going very well, so I think the kids really enjoy it, and they enjoy the different options of fruits and veggies, and everyone seems to be well excited about it, so it's going well. Thank you.
Very good.
Barb, you get to stand up too.
Nice to be here. I am a former chef from Aromas. I'm really excited to be working with Jill and be part of a great team and learn more about the school system and doing foods, and it's been really fun working with the kids so far, so.
If you want to see a team that's humming and really those, that team is phenomenal. They, they've got like this internal brain wave thing, go ahead and keep it moving. So thank you very much for joining us, Barb, we're really happy to have you here with us. And then at the Three Lakes and Sugar Camp School, we have Kristin Opel, she's our elementary school counselor, and she came to us from Aspiris Ascension, and formerly she was a counselor with options in Rylander for eight years' experience. And then at Three Lakes, our 712 group, we've got a pretty exciting group of hires here. Mark Busco, he is our Three Lakes business teacher, and he came from Lakeland area, I believe, is that correct? Did you hire him? Oh, that's a nice little tidbit, I'm so happy he's joined the family. And then we have Gretchen Gavins. Gretchen, stand up and take the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be back. I was a student here at Three Lakes High School, so it's fun to be back teaching in the high school now. Previously, I was teaching online, and then before that, Edward Bin High School, and before that, at Lakeland as well, so I did know Justin. And he hired me at Lakeland, so it's fun to have that connection and be back here. So it's great to be in the halls again and meeting all the students, and it's been a great start to the year.
Wonderful. We also have Erin Marvin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Erin. I'm not so, I'm coming, I came from Tomahawks, I was there for six years, and then I was in Manassha for three years before that, so I'm a sugar camper, graduated from Three Lakes in '07. It's been really awesome being back. The kids have been phenomenal, the staff has been great, the community's been so welcoming, and just, like, it's been a really awesome first couple of weeks, I'm super happy to be back, so thank you.
You need to forgive me when I call you Erin Wallace, because I'm always going to say Erin Wallace, so.
I didn't even want to say it. Oh, you're good. Thanks, hi.
And Michelle Gunderson, she is our 712 special ed teacher. She couldn't be with us tonight, but she brings with her, I believe, around 22 years of experience or so, and she has been in the Crandon District for many years, and ties to Three Lakes property here, lots of connections. And she wanted me to say to the board, thank you for the opportunity to be working here, so I said I would pass that on.
Excellent.
Did I miss anybody? Oh, I did, I did. Jessie Westphal, Jessie, would you stand up, please? You're supposed to be in my shirt list.
Oh, that's all right, I kind of figured I was, since I'm a floater. So I am so happy to be here also. So I'm teaching both in Sugar Camp and Three Lakes music, so I have all of the 4K through sixth grade students, and then also high school choir. So previously, I taught in Mozenee for 14 years, before my family moved up here full time three years ago, and taught, long-term subbed in at Pines for a couple of years, and then did a position there last year, an 80% position before seeing this job open. And we live in Three Lakes, so we, our son is in seventh grade here, so he came awesome. So looking forward to being here and looking forward to meeting everybody and being in the building, so thanks.
Thank you.
Lots of positive comments from, from my students.
Yeah.
So I'm really glad for sixth grade music to be reinstated. That makes me.
That makes me really happy to hear that.
Every day, pretty much, it's something that's talked about.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you.
So part of the interview process, did that include a vocal audition at all?
Well, no, not technically. But I mean, you know, if anyone wants that ever, let me know. But I was a vocal major, so, I mean, that's, that's my forte, is singing, so.
Yeah, great.
So we have, it's always, you know, a change, hard to say goodbye to the people who are with us for many years, but we have.
We have Crystal here, too.
Oh, Crystal, and I talked to you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Crystal, Crystal is a very recent addition.
Yeah, I'm Crystal, I went to school here, graduated here. I did work here for a few years prior to going to Rylander, been in Rylander, working at the middle school for six years. So I'm excited to come back to Three Lakes, and my daughter goes here, and she's only dropped this last year, and then she graduates, so.
But you can't leave.
When I graduated here, I was, I couldn't get out of here fast. I, I love working in the school, so it's kind of funny that I'm like, oh, I work in the school though, but my senior year, I was out of here. So I'm happy to be back.
We're happy to have you back, thank you, Crystal. Yeah, we, as we talk about, we look and see what comes through our doors, and we had some additional students come in, into special ed world that, and time, coverage, support that we needed, and we had to make a hire, like, last week was it? I think it was a pretty quick turnaround, so Rachel, Crystal was able to make that happen for us, so we really appreciate that. So those are our new hires.
Great, well, thanks to each and every one of our new hires here, we're happy to have you as part of our family, and look forward to working with you for many years.
Now, you do need to know, when I sent them the invite, I said, you do not need to stay for the whole board meeting, as exciting and fun as it is. You are okay going home to your babies and your families and everything else, so please feel free to depart if you would like to, and stay for the fun if you'd like. Thank you for coming in.
All right, very good. And October meeting date dates, what do we have, Terry?
We will have our regular board meeting scheduled for October 22nd at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. I'm sorry, 26th, October 26th, 2022, here in the boardroom. And that was a move from our normal 19th, because I will be attending the Wisconsin, actually, the National Rural Convention being held in Wisconsin this year.
Okay, so we'll need to set a motion to set that, being that it's, it's off the third Wednesday, right?
Didn't we, I thought we did the last meeting.
We did a last meeting.
Did we?
Yeah.
Thank you for that, okay. Perfect. Okay, next, graduation date for 2023.
Graduation. Graduation is scheduled for Friday, May 26th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, in the Three Lakes High School gym. Certainly think I need to add to that?
Stacy would like to add that.
She just wants you to move on.
We need to go, Stacy.
Me too. Oh, my gosh, I'm weepy, I'm weepy.
Want to make that motion, Stacy?
Sure, I'll make the motion to set the 2023 graduation date, May 26th, 7:00 PM. Goosebumps all over.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. I'm sure no questions, or do we have questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. There we go. And next, we have consider approval of the personnel report.
Okay, our personnel report for this meeting is our hirings. Barbara Bennett, assistant cook. Rhonda Beatty, paraprofessional. Jennifer Frank, paraprofessional. Grace Stefanic, paraprofessional. Crystal Jankovic, paraprofessional. Brad Volkman, boys basketball coach. Bob Warner, cross-country program assistant. Bill Doherty, boys soccer program assistant. And Sarah Steve, National Honor Society advisor.
All right, prepared to take a motion for approval?
Make a motion and approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All right, any other questions on that? Hearing none, call to vote. All of the favors signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. And next, we have consider appointment of a CISA 9 Board of Control representative. Start us off, Terry.
Yes, Terry McCluskey has resigned his position on the CISA 9 Board and Board of Control due to some scheduling conflicts with health-related issues, and we talked about it at length and with Al Betri in CISA 9, and we have a couple of options that we can look at doing to fill the position. So I brought it to you for consideration. We are asked to first see if there's anybody on the board here who would like to assume the role of that position. If so, then we just go ahead and we make that motion, formalize it here at this meeting, and we would go ahead and contact CISA 9. I've also had quite a length conversation with Al, letting him know that we are in a situation with our current board members that are very heavily booked in other things with, with sports, children being active. Mike, I know with your business and such, that it's difficult, especially this being sprung on you. Those meetings are once a month, but it's hard to fit one more thing in. So I said, there is a possibility that perhaps we would not be able to fill that. And they did some checking, and what they would do is if we decide that we're not going to appoint somebody here, actually, I said, make a motion, we can appoint, you can just appoint a member if you all agree to it, so to clarify that. If we don't fill it, then they will bring it to another medium-sized school, because believe it or not, Three Lakes is considered a medium-sized school. I always fight them, say we're a small school, but they, they don't agree, we don't fit that criteria. And they would ask another district if they want to fill the role. If they do, that would be for a three-year term. If there is not an interest, then they would leave it open for the following year, it would just be a vacancy, and then we would be able to up it again in one year, we could bring it back to this board. So that's the conversation you have in front of you. I just want to kind of set the stage for you as far as comfort level. I have a very strong relationship with CISA, and I feel very in touch with what's going on and what is happening. So although I would love to have somebody representing us, I don't feel that we would lose critical touch if that was not able to be the case. Michael, give it back to you.
Okay, so, yeah, it's, it is a once-a-month meeting in Tomahawk. I did it for a while, and then Tom took over, and then Terry after that. And, you know, it's, it's good to have representation, so I don't know if anybody has the time to make that commitment here. Any thoughts?
I'm not interested.
Okay.
I have to say no at this time, too. It's a busy year for me.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not long at heart, but I have to learn to say no sometimes, and this is one of those times.
Unfortunately, I'm in the same boat, I got, I just have too, too many other obligations.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess at this point here, it sounds like it, with the schedules that our current board members have, we don't have the ability to make a commitment to this, Terry, so if something changes, I guess we can let Terry know. And, yeah.
Very good.
At this point here, we won't have a board member to appointment.
Okay.
So.
Do you know what nights the meetings typically are?
I don't.
Or is it very?
I don't, because they've changed and I haven't seen that. But I do know that they can be rather lengthy. And it is a weeknight, of course.
Yeah.
I will be sure then that I reach out to CISA, let them know of our status, and go forward from there.
Yeah.
Thank you for considering, but I, I 100% understand where every one of you sitting in your seat is at right now, so. And so did Al.
All right. Very good. Okay, so next, we have consider approval of football co-op with Phelps for years 2023 through 24 and 2024 through 2025.
I don't see Charlie.
No, you don't. He asked if I would share with you, his thoughts are that we continue the co-op in football based on current enrollment for both here and at Phelps. During the period of that timeframe, it would never have any impact on our divisional placement at all. They keep us well below the 200 cap. We have had, and this is probably our longest-standing co-op, or one of the longest-standing co-ops we had, we have had. And we currently have Phelps student-athlete competing for us. And he's going to be continuing on, I mean, he's not a senior this year, so we see no reason to not continue what we've been doing. That's Mr. Volk's take on it.
Very good.
And I would concur. It's been a good, been a good deal in football for both parties.
So coaches have then, are still and continue to be in support of it?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right. Anybody prepared to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the football co-op with Phelps for 2023 through 24 and 2024 to 2025.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any further questions? Hearing none, a call to vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none heard. All right. We are set for the football co-op there for a few more years, so that's good. Next, we go to the school forest camp three update report. We can talk a little bit about.
Yeah, most of what the updates we have were talked about out there at the site. I'm just, as maybe you noticed, I'm really jacked up about getting kids out there because there's so many different, I mean, the science, you saw some of it, you cut a trail and take a walk, and bingo, you've got piles and piles of curriculum, science-wise, that we can offer our kids, but there's so many other curricular areas that can be touched up there. Our views of the history, you know, there's so many different things like, and, and last year where we took a biology trip out there, and they did the rough, rough girls drumming project out there. I mean, I, I had firsthand view of it because I had a child from our house that was in biology class. And to see the math and the science melt together in that project was beautiful. And that's without having a parking lot even out there, you know what I mean? So really excited to get kids out there, and we got a bunch of teachers that are really excited to get kids out there. Timeline-wise, my only, my only, like, growly moment is it's tough to get littles out there without other facilities when we have now. Junior high, high school kids, you could pull a bus into where we parked, we could pull a bus in Camp Two and walk in, it's no problem. But we really need to get going and get a parking lot for starters, so that we can safely load and unload smaller children. That's, and, and obviously, you heard Phil, the timeline is now, we're, we're at the, the, not saying at the mercy, but we better wait for the permitting process to play out before we can even start. So a little bit of patience on that, but that's the way it is, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And thanks to yourself and many others that have joined you out there.
Jeff Smith, John Grossman have been super busy this summer, you know. You guys walked on some of the work that they put in with the corridor to open up the front. And they've, they've been very helpful. Mary's, and she, when I asked her about the book that her grandpa wrote, she had a copy in my hand within like 10 minutes.
Out of basketball.
Out of basketball. So, super cool, because that's, that's local history.
Yeah.
It's a piece of it right there.
Yeah, yeah. It's exciting to see kids get boots on the ground and, and, you know, just a little bit removed from the virtual world, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, very good, and it was great to be out there and just actually see some of the progress.
On paper, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It sure makes a difference with the perspective, even with where you think the parking lot is until you see the flakes. And then it's like, oh, it's more on the angle, you know, it just really solidifies it.
And it helps you to visualize the whole moving the dirt from one spot to the other to make it gray out.
It does.
You can see it on the, on the drawing, but then when you get it there and you actually walk up, you go, yeah, this, this dirt will go down here. Now that makes more sense.
And I really appreciate the stakes that were marked identifying themselves on the map as well. So, I mean, it really helped try to visualize and what actually is going to be where and such. It was very informative, so, very good. Any other questions, board members?
The only thing that I had was, you know, obviously waiting for the DNR to come back and either confirm or, or hopefully go with their original, what they originally told us for delineation, to maybe move the parking lot back. But if the parking lot needs to stay where it's at, I just wonder if we need to reconsider the layout of it. I don't know, I just feel like it could be a little, little better placed, so maybe it doesn't take up quite as much as the, it wouldn't feel like it took up as much of the property. Because right now, it feels like it's really spread out.
Josh, I'm hearing what you're saying. If you turned it, now part of the area that's already clear will be more utilized for riding. Whereas, like this, you're, you're, you're moving it all into the area that has to be clear. Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that point at all.
And actually, I think if we were to do that, I know we had talked about, you know, a turnaround and, you know, making it more accessible to larger vehicles like buses. I think if we were to turn it to, yes, we'd have to swing the driveway further to the east. However, I think it would be able to kind of be looped around a little easier as well than to be able to come through, so. And then you could bring the building closer.
I'm trying to remember, did Phil say when the DNR was going to come back with a wetland?
No.
Delineation?
I think the information for the DNR will go to Terry, because they were, they were in direct communication with her when they notified us that they were beginning the permitting process.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well.
We hurry up and wait.
Yeah, right, huh? Any other questions? All right, we can move on to, uh, we'll go to the update from the long-range planned district goals meeting that we had in August.
Okay, within board docs, I actually have two documents. I have the original copy, too, which I put in a little earlier. And then, since then, we had had an administrative meeting with some, some suggestions made. So you can, do you have a preference which one I refer to? I see you have some notes there, Mike. Do you want me to go with the original one? The copy of board two, or can we go into the, the second document? It just has a few more things filled in. It won't change much.
We can go to the second one.
Okay, so if you take a look at this, this is where we are at now with our long-range plan, taken from our meeting. Let's see if it'll move for me. It's okay, I have a hard copy. What I tried to do is capture, again, I shared, I think, a little bit before, what our intentions were, what we heard at the meeting when we had the group come together. We looked at our survey data, we, we talked through a lot of what we had accomplished, what we still wanted to accomplish. And then I've been working to put it into a solidified plan. So within here, just more than placeholder, but so you get a feel, there's a district administrator message. And I also put in the long-range planning purpose along with our mission statement. I thought that something that I found lacking in the past long-range plans where maybe it wasn't real clear to somebody on the outside looking in as to how it was developed. And it was more than just three or four people coming together and seeing this is what it is. And the intention of this document is to be a living document and continue to grow from it. So it's not starting from scratch every single time. So with that said, did you want me to go through these paragraphs, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you want me to read them to you, or do you, the district administrator's message, I'll just, I said, "Three Lakes School District has a long tradition of providing educational excellence. Our mission is to teach students to be productive citizens, and we believe the best way to accomplish this is to provide each student with a personalized education that will inspire him or her to become lifelong learners. Our motto, personal education, lifetime inspiration, captures the spirit of who we are. Education can be measured by academic success, yet we know it also includes so much more. Our students demonstrate their well-roundedness in many ways, whether it be in preparation for college or technical school proficiency and workforce readiness skills, or the ignited entrepreneurial spark that leads each one to follow his or her own unique path. This success can be directly attributed to generations of community members, educators, families, and supporters who have given our students the richest of learning and living experiences." So that's my message to our stakeholders. And then the long-range planning purpose, and please listen to this carefully in case you want me to make any changes or suggestions on this. "The long-range planning process has been in place for several years. The Board of Education Planning Retreat Team began the process of creating the new long-range plan for 2023 through 2028. Representatives from our stakeholder groups are invited," should be word, "to the table to review the past successes and challenges while focusing on the future. Prior to the meeting, community members had the opportunity to participate in a survey designed to gather information based on demographics, district perceptions, and facilities. Our attention focused on the community survey, and we found that the results gave us a better understanding of the perceptions of our respondents. The group reviewed the past five-year plan and discussed goals that were accomplished, ongoing, or no longer pertinent to our future planning. This conversation was deep and rich and helped us identify some key areas to be considered in the long-range planning process. This event called for analysis, reflection, discussion, and brainstorming, all in effort to improve our district in the identified areas. These areas were identified as our priority long-range goals. These included teaching and learning, positive school culture, and innovative communication connections. The long-range plan is considered a living document. As we continually review and analyze our process, the LRP may see some revisions or additions as we chart our course."
Very good.
And then, of course, we have our mission statement. And then what we did is we broke it down into the three areas and decided that it might be a good idea to actually have more than just a statement or a heading as to what these really capture. So under teaching and learning, formally referred to as curriculum instruction, teaching and learning for the outcome of student success is at the heart of what we do and why we are here. Under this, we will prioritize the following goals, which will be measurable. We believe that every student should engage in rigorous and relevant educational experiences. We will meet our students at their current academic level and provide individualized instruction and learning support. Students and staff will become experts at learning. It is our goal that all students will be engaged in their learning, grow and achieve to their highest level, and upon graduation, be college and career-ready. So our goal, as we met administratively and talked this over a few times, and we did our wordsmithing, became, students and staff will become expert learners. This was derived out of our conversations that we really noticed that we weren't talking about just students being expert learners. We as staff professionals want to be experts as well in our teaching, so they can be expert learners. And once we came to rest on that as being our goal, it seemed like what we were trying to say fell into place better. So the first objective, and I changed a little bit, I went with objectives rather than the numbering system. Objective one, provide professional learning opportunities for educational staff. Objective two, develop and implement multiple methods of authentic assessment for students to demonstrate learning. Objective three, embrace and develop individualized learning and teaching options for all students and educators. Objective four, integrate engineering and design process into K-12 programming. And objective five, continue to advance partnership opportunities by growing connections with local businesses. So those are the five objectives that we identified, that we want to be kind of those overarching, you know, objectives within. Underneath these, then, we will be building specific action steps to reach these objectives, meeting this goal. Question so far about the way we are laying it out. Are you feeling comfortable with the format?
I am, yeah.
Easy to read.
I think it's great.
I like what's written. The only question is, you do reference in the beginning paragraph that the following goals, which will be measurable, which I'm not sure that every one of these is necessarily measurable.
Okay, I think I'll be able to show you that when we get into the action steps.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Going to positive school culture. We had school culture, but we determined that we're really talking positive school culture. A strong and positive school culture is characterized by a clear sense of direction and shared accountability to advance, advance a vision for success, which shapes how teachers and leaders do their jobs. It is built on mutual respect and trust, which are the foundation of learning communities. We recognize positive school culture as the mood of the school. This extends beyond our school programming into our interaction with our community. All right, so that's just to kind of give you a summary. I'm open to other suggestions if you would like more there. I think maybe when we go through the goals, you might want to come back to the positive school culture summary and see if there's anything you want me to add. Our goal is to ensure a safe and welcoming school environment that encourages stakeholder involvement. And these are the objectives. Embrace our common Three Lakes School District Blue Jay culture. We talked at length about that during our meeting. Objective two, acknowledge and value the individuality of each community school, Sugar Camp, and Three Lakes. Objective three, increase school spirit and pride through student and staff involvement. Again, one we felt we wanted to see across the board. Objective four, develop a mentorship program between upper and lower grade levels. As I read this now, and I've read this many, many, many times, I'm thinking that under positive school culture in the description, I have a nice capsule capturing of the shared accountability to advance through our teachers and leaders. But we're missing a statement about students. And perhaps we're missing a statement about community. Because we're talking about full stakeholder involvement.
When you say stakeholder, you had envisioned meaning?
I'm talking, I'm envisioning, really, we're focusing on our students and staff. It can't be staff-driven, it can't be student-driven, but community comes into play there, too. Culture is a more difficult one to define. Culture is a more difficult one to define. As we have, here it is very much about what it feels like, but we want to be intentional in our actions to develop that atmosphere.
So in that goal statement, Terry, encourage a safe and welcoming school environment that encourages stakeholder involvement. Encourages stakeholder involvement. Trying to understand exactly what is behind that.
Well, I think part of it is when we looked at our community school individuality, for instance. That's teacher and student. There's also people who feel a very strong commitment to their Sugar Camp school and those who feel a strong commitment to their Three Lakes school. And that's beyond students and staff. That's parents, grandparents. If you recall, we talked a lot about the family historical and how, I think someone even said that's probably more important to some of the adults coming together than it is for maybe our students who are more accustomed to being together now.
Okay, so stakeholders basically embracing students, staff, community, parents. I mean, it's all these entities.
Yeah. That when they come into the school, the culture welcomes them. They feel safe. They feel what I call, with my staff, and we've been working on the last two years, we call it the mood, the mood of school. It doesn't take very long to step into a facility and you sense the mood almost immediately, whether it be artwork on the walls, the greetings that you get from students or staff, the interactions that you have with each other on a daily basis. And that's not just there. That is work to develop it, and you make it a priority to be who you are and how you're identified. And I think in talking with the admin team when we worked through this, we talked a couple of times about this. To me, that's where we were really trying to go to capture this.
Would it be something to consider? And I like what you got there, but involvement, would it be engagement, perhaps? Where we're looking to engage our community, our staff, our students?
Are you looking at an objective right now? Or are you?
The goal.
The goal itself?
Yep, the goal statement. Ensure a safe and welcoming school environment that encourages stakeholder engagement, perhaps?
That.
I guess.
That.
I'm going to use both words.
I'm wondering.
Because they are two, they are two separate things, but they both are needed.
Stakeholder involvement and engagement, are you thinking there? Encourages engagement and stakeholder involvement.
I guess I see engagement, maybe another step above, you know, just being involved. I guess it takes it to maybe another level, perhaps?
So I have ensure a safe and welcoming school environment that encourages engagement and stakeholder involvement.
I guess I was suggesting just taking the word involvement out and just encourage a stakeholder engagement. That was what I was looking at.
Okay. Other thoughts? I'm taking notes. Because I'm bringing it back next month for you for your final.
You could jump, you could jump to there. I mean, there is, there is plenty of involvement through the community and with the parents and teachers and all that. But it would be nice to see that next step of maybe getting a few more involved. Or, I'm sorry, engaged.
Through involvement.
Through involvement, right.
Beyond that, I had another suggestion, too, as far as objective. Reflecting what we're looking at to do with our next step with facilities. Would one of our objectives be considering a physical environment to enhance health and safety? For stakeholders, I guess.
It is something that we're already doing, but being a five-year plan, if we're going to.
It's going to be a long-term.
It's going to be, yeah, it would be here, I think would be an appropriate place to make that objective. Objective five. You want to give me that verbiage again?
Consider a physical environment to enhance health and safety of all stakeholders. Okay, Archie, just leave it, of all.
I think something.
Because you have stakeholders listed in the, in the goal.
Yeah. And that one is definitely one that we can delineate action steps and measure.
Okay.
And I like that much better, actually, than having a separate, try to tack on facilities, long-range planning, or.
Exactly, it fits perfectly in here, yep.
Okay, other feedback on that section?
What you're talking about with adding students to the introduction, introduction paragraph? I think you could just simply, in the second line where it says, "Which shapes how," you could just say, "Which shapes how students, teachers, and leaders."
I think that, that captures it perfectly without adding more, because that is what we're wanting to do. Yes.
Okay.
This was actually a very hard one to try to get into words because culture is feelings and, and I want, like, we talked about it, to be things we can wrap our hands around and really make measurable. So that one's going to take a little bit of extra work. I have to change that, community connections. I bring this up because in the original, we called it innovative community connections. And then when we met with the team, I think we landed on just keeping it community connections. I'm going to ask Jen, am I remembering correctly, or am I? This, I thought we talked about that quite a bit.
I remember you said the communications part of it, that we changed it to.
To just community connections.
Yes.
Because we think the steps that within here, some of them are innovative, but we didn't know that that needed to be in there, so. Going through, again, trying to give a little summary, meaningful communication, engagement, and opportunities to connect with our stakeholders lead to stronger relationships and trust across the school community. This includes developing consistent and purposeful messaging in school-related matters, including co-curricular communications. Nurture and stakeholder relationships through systematic, accurate, and timely messaging are very important to the Three Lakes School District. In addition, it is our desire to expand our outreach to a larger audience and feature the many opportunities our school district can offer in educational programming, innovative experiences, and the quality of life in the North Woods. We want to celebrate that we're unique. And this is one that, no matter how hard you work on communication, it can always be better. And we know that this is an area, it's, yes, it's by far way better than it was 10 years ago or even five years ago, but the world keeps moving and changing, and we're learning, you know, how people get their information. And we have looked internally as well as externally. We have some things to do internally first, and that's going to be one of our focuses next month when I bring to you our proposed annual goals. That one will be at the top. So the goals that we have going with this are increase engagement and confidence of internal and external stakeholders. I feel pretty strongly about this goal. I feel that, I'm going to speak for the team, I think we concurd with that. We didn't feel that necessarily there was a strong confidence at all times with the way things are getting out. We can put out a lot and we can do the best we can, but we learned through our meeting and our survey and just listening to the people who do tend to share with us that we have missed the boat in some cases, and that's something that we want to clean up. We don't want to look like we're not being, you know, we're not timely for one thing, or we're flying by the seat of our pants in thinking of it secondhand. This is where I feel like we really want to spend some of our focus on setting protocols and such, so it becomes a natural flow in what we do. So I set that up a little bit before I go into the goals, because that was the thinking behind it, or, I'm sorry, the objectives. So objective number one, review and refresh school-related communication procedures. Objective two, establish district-wide co-curricular communication procedures. That's a mouthful. Objective three, develop a wide-reaching marketing campaign to inform, invite, and recruit potential new families and students into our destination district. And objective four, explore expansion of birth-to-four early connections and opportunities. So this is where we're trying to bring it all together through presenting who we are and doing a good job of it. What?
Questions?
But changing the goal above in positive school culture to read engagement, and now you're reading engagement again.
I'm fine with increased confidence. Engagement here comes out of, I think, reaching to the wider, the wider group, the wider global, the not our immediate community. It maybe doesn't have to be signified here because it is throughout the objectives or within the objectives. But I think confidence, and I would even say consistency. Maybe that word should be consistency and confidence.
When I first read that goal statement, I was trying to understand what confidence was in, you know, what, what that actually meant. And after hearing your explanation, it made sense. Without hearing that explanation, I guess, again, I just wonder if someone's going to read that and, and wonder what they mean by confidence of internal and external stakeholders. I now understand what you're trying to do with that, but I wonder if you could insert the word relationship, increase new relationship with internal and external stakeholders. Maybe. Does that make sense?
If you were to do that, you could then, it'd be easier to remove engagement. You could, you could do increase and expand the relationship of internal and external stakeholders.
You know, it's, it's wordsmithing, it's basically, it's.
I like that, though. Well, that's why it's here before you. Increase and expand the relationship and competence of internal and external stakeholders. That is what, that is what the goal is. That says it better.
I guess I was putting the word relationship in, in place of confidence. So that's, that's the one I was struggling with unless I heard that explanation.
So how would you say it, Mike?
You're just saying remove confidence, aren't you?
Correct. And you had, basically came back to the word engagement then, right?
Uh, no, we expand and improve, what did I say? Expand and, expand and, or increase and expand relationships of internal and external stakeholders.
Okay, so removing both engagement and confidence, increase and expand relationships with internal and external stakeholders. That's what your thought is on it, Josh? I like the word relationship in it, Terry. I think that's what we're trying to do, is build that relationship with these stakeholders. And I think your objective supports all that.
Very good.
Do you want to go through the actions?
I do, but I'm not going to take a lot of time on this because this, this is truly, so you get a feel of the next steps. It's not like this is what it's going to be. I meet with the team on Thursday. We also have another leadership team meeting on Monday, so this is going to change. But I wanted you to get a feel for how this could develop. So looking at goal one under Teaching and Learning, we have, you know, the statement made, but then there's the objective. And then those are potential action steps. These are already taking place right now, and you can see where, you can see what the action is. You can see that there's a responsible lead person. And then if we find that it needs to be an accountability, we can always add a fourth column that says, you know, what that accountability is. Sometimes the accountability is actually implementing the action step. For instance, this one has, "Educational staff will actively participate in professional learning opportunities and best instructional practices. Professional development coursework is aligned to the district-identified areas." That's already happening. We started that this last year. Most of our teachers did professional development that we provided. Our ask of them to begin it this summer. And some of the coursework that they've done to support our vision included the top 10 tools, keys to literacy, a co-teaching component, an inclusive learning for special education component that they're getting training in, and then the development of this district leadership team that, that we're working through. Some CISA, Carrie Jo Bornberg is helping us because we need to become better as leaders in the district administratively, sharing the message with our staff and how all this work ties back to why we're doing it. We identified that, we know we're doing it, we're giving it a great effort, but we're perhaps not as strong as we need to be. So we're saying, yep, we need a little bit of help with that. So this is an idea for you of what we're adding, trying to lay it out. I think this looks a lot more concrete. One criticism I heard from one of our citizens, and it wasn't meant to be bad. It was just, well, it just seemed like in the past that it would come up, yep, that was done. Well, what was done, how do we know it was done? The district administrator said, well, that was not on the list anymore because it was accomplished. And it probably was, but it wasn't real clear how it had been accomplished. And I thought something like this will help us keep seeing where we're going, growing when things are reached. So there's some things in yellow I added just today, which my admin team hasn't seen because we talked about it the other day, and I'm like, that was a great point. It's going Ryan Bach, it's going into the action plan, so we have to talk about it some more. But I thought you could read through this and say, okay, there's, there's a lot of blanks there. There's more work to be done. But that, again, like I said, helps you see where our direction is going. And I'm willing to take any feedback. Yays, nays, don't go there, add more. And after, you can review it again. If you want to just call me individually, if you have other thoughts that you'd like to add or email me, willing to do that, too. if you have other thoughts that you'd like to add, or email me, willing to do that, too. But I guess what I'm looking for is your, your approval and support that, yep, you're on the right track here, further develop it, and bring it back next month for your consideration of approval.
Yeah, definitely a strong advocate of objective five, continue advanced partnership opportunities by growing connection with local businesses. I just see many learning opportunities for our students to learn outside the classroom, working with local businesses. And I guess, I know a little bit more because we're, we're getting a little bit more actively involved in it as, as a business. And I, I see this basically as an opportunity for students, not just to do work outside of school, right? This is a learning opportunity. And I think it's a chance also for students to build relationships with some of our area businesses. I mean, we can look at the papers recently and, and just see the struggles of some of our local community employers that just have trouble finding help. And, and I think building these relationships at an early stage is something that can just help our community grow. You know, because I remember when I was in high school here, you know, probably didn't have a whole good idea on what opportunities existed for me beyond high school. And many of us just automatically thought four-year, or tech. And, and that's changing. There are a lot of great opportunities right out of school that our high school is preparing our students for. And so, great benefit to the students, great benefit to our community. And, and also, I think this one here also supports this objective two for multiple methods of authentic assessment. We're basically asking students to prove what they learn. And now they see a reason for why they need to know math, why they need to know how to write up science reports or whatever, because now they may be asked to do this when they're working in the schoolwork program. And so, I just, I think there's a lot of opportunity. And I like to see that, that objective five, continue to advance partnership opportunities by growing connections with local businesses, and I like the word local. So, yeah, that's, I think that one is going to be something that is really going to be beneficial for all stakeholders. And not say that other ones here aren't, but I'm very excited about that one. So. Yeah, any other questions? Stacy, any thoughts on?
It's good to me.
Covers everything that you were looking for?
Yep.
Yeah?
Josh, do you feel that the, the piece with the measurability will be there as we develop the action plan?
I think so.
Okay. Because that is in my mind, in our intention as we're, we're doing it.
You know, and, and so much of it, so much of the whole process moved on from, like you said, just implementing stuff. I mean, that's not the way, that's not the way learning happens anymore. I mean, so measurability is very, is a very tough word to utilize in education today anyways, because so many are measured on so many different levels.
Yeah.
So.
It's important to me that this document captures what I call the heart of who we are as a district. And I feel like this, if you take a look at it, you really get a feel for the thoughts, both internally and externally, of the, the people who've come together, as well as the tradition that, that keeps defining us and setting us apart, because, you know, I'm, I'm not tongue-in-cheek when I say destination district. This is a fantastic district on so many levels. And, you know, we want to celebrate that, and in the, in the same token, continue to make ourselves better, because it makes us all better. So, again, if you have more feedback, reach out to me. I'm becoming very attached to it. It's kind of like my little baby, but I am very willing to help make it a little bit stronger. And like I said, the team has been phenomenal working through this with me and providing feedback and, you know, talking about what fits and what doesn't. So I think we are on the right track here.
It was also up to see continued objective expansion of birth-to-four early connections opportunities, so.
Yep, we're actively working on a couple of things with that right now.
Yeah, this is, this is very good. Yeah. Michelle, any thoughts?
When I was reading this over last night, I really liked your layout, your setup, the columns that showed everything. I was like, this is awesome.
Thank you. Good.
Yes.
We want it simple.
It shows clearly, yes, everything. Yes.
Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate hearing that.
Yeah. Well done, team.
Good job, guys.
All right, any further questions that are comments on it? We'll send it back and look for this to consider for approval for the month of October.
Good.
All right, very good. Just now, we're starting to dry off, right? Alex, we go to the seclusion and restraint report.
Yes, we just brought this back because we had the wrong document showed up in, in your information. So Carrie is also here this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to Carrie and let her go through that first.
So, same document, updated date. I think there was a mix-up when the original letter was uploaded, but same information in there. So you should have received the updated date in your board packet, so I'll just read you through the points on here. Dare Miss Maney and the Three Lakes School Board, in accordance with the 2011 Wisconsin Act 125, Part 4, 2C, I'm reporting the following. Number one, there have been zero incidents of seclusion and physical restraint in the Three Lakes School District during the 21, 20, 21, 22 school year. Number two, the total number of pupils who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint with the 20, 21, 22 school year was zero. And number three, the number of students with disabilities who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint with the 20, 21, 20, 22 school year was zero.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, district-related positive happenings. We're off to a good start, right?
I think so.
There we are.
I'll share something. So Terry and I met with the 4K teachers and some of the staff at Demer Library earlier. Is it still in August?
It was August.
Yeah, seems like a long time ago. But we were trying to connect Demer to not only Sugar Camp, which we already had established, or they do story over there, but also provide it for our 4K students who are here all day now. So that will be starting next week. So we're excited to offer that for 4K students, both in Three Lakes and in Sugar Camp. And students who just attend school in the mornings are able to come back in the afternoon, too. We'll see. And hopefully Jen will capture some of that next week.
And I believe at Sugar Camp, we're still welcoming the younger kids in at that time?
Yes.
As, as a community, so you could see other kids there as well. And then the Demer Library is also keeping their own program at their site. So it's really kind of capturing all three levels. Think it's a super great benefit to the whole community. We, you know, the sooner that we can collaborate, there's, it looks like there's going to be a new director very soon here, a new hire, it looks like this, it's coming. I'm just, I don't know anything official, it just sounds like it is in the works. Candace has been really great to work with. Our 4K teachers are very excited about it. And we're just trying to find ways that we can keep growing these, this specific community partnership, so good stuff coming.
We've got some really positive things, positive feedback on our wind time, Junior High School that we've, I know other parts of the district have been doing it for quite some time, but it's new to us. And going really well so far. I guess, maybe I thought there'd be more wrinkles with something in the wind time is that last 30 minutes of the day. But so far, after about a little over two weeks of going live with it, the worst afternoon I had was five students that we had to schedule last minute that were, didn't make their own selections or weren't selected by a teacher, and that's really, most afternoons, there's zero. So everybody's finding their spots. We've got it set up in a system where, for example, in science, every day, one or the other of our two science teachers is available for academic support for that subject. And then the other one's offering an enrichment course or a fun offering that kids can select. And so it's, it's really, it's starting to, I'm starting to see the, the positive motivation where if you're caught up with your schoolwork and a teacher doesn't select you to come in and do this, then you get to pick. And there's, and there's some really cool offerings that, you know, teachers are putting in there for, so, so if you have, if you have two in your department, which is our biggest departments, then, then you go every other day. And if you're a singleton, like for example, Mr. Busco, he'll, he'll balance his own week where some dates he'll do something like a stock market simulation exercise, and then the next day it'll be business class academic support. So it's working out really good. And, and there are a few kids that still do choose the traditional study hall route, but usually that's not even filled out. There's, there's a set amount for each course, so kids get into it early so they can get it before it fills out, you know. And as a side benefit, every one of our kids is in their infinite campus portal. That's, that's cool, because that's where they can see other grades, missing assignments. It's, so far so good on the wind time for the older kids.
Excellent. Good.
That's the high school. We're, we're moving, Junior High, we, where we're taking a little more time to, we didn't want seventh graders to come in and have to, okay, pick your own classes tomorrow. Again, when they're first learning the junior high ways of it. So we'll be implementing more wind time choices in the future for Junior High. But the high school is going really smoothly so far.
Good.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And it was really, really kind of heartwarming and cool. First day of school, pull up here, and there's this big tailgate going on in the parking lot. And I got to be honest, the principal moment's like, okay, what's going on? But 100%, 100% student-driven, 100% student-organized, no adults in it. Well, I shouldn't say that. I think some parents helped out with some of the equipment, and some of the girls and things like that that were out there. But really cool, welcome back to school. Tailgate breakfast out there. And I know it's set up by a group of kids in the friend group, you know, that, that friend group grew a little bit. And there's people out there who I know weren't in the friend group that were invited in to have breakfast, and, you know, they were yelling for kids coming across the park. You know, hey, come on over, grab breakfast. Outside of the group of friends who set it up, so super cool. Tells you how great, you know, our, our kids are fantastic.
That's Three Lakes.
Right?
When I pulled in.
They invited the principal over there.
I, I know. And when I pulled in, I'm like, oh my God, what's happening? And I'm like, okay, I looked and Justin's going to be right behind me. And it was just, it was all so good.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. And the food they cooked was absolutely delicious. So either their parents or Terry Crowe's in the fantastic job. Because the food they made was absolutely fantastic. Yeah, so they were, that was a really good way to start the school year, for sure. Tim's got some pictures up.
All right, anybody else? Okay, very good. And next we have the WASB correspondence.
We did receive a letter that Stacy Klein, did you know this, Stacy?
I did.
Dear Stacy, congratulations, you have achieved a level one in the WASB member recognition program. So this comes out, you know, I won't read the whole thing, you guys can take a look at it, but they recognize her for what she's already participated in, and she will be recognized at the October 13th.
Which I won't be, I got soccer stuff.
I can pretend.
Sports stuff.
Yes, yes.
I think I have a doubleheader that night.
We, we will cover it for you, okay? No, that's okay. But it's very cool that, I mean, that's very nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Stacy.
Yeah. You know, it, it, it did actually require you to speak.
That's why I created this.
Very good. Yeah, that's awesome. Okay, so that is it for our meeting. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Nobody's opposing. I guess we can go. All right. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and we look forward to seeing you in October.